Welcome to the City of Grand Terrace City Council meeting. At this time, I will call to order our regular meeting for June 9th, 2020. City Clerk has a Zoom broadcasting announcement that she will be making. Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pursuant to Section 3 of Executive Order N-2920 issued by Governor Newsom on March 17th, 2020, the regular meeting of the City Council for June 9th, 2020, will be conducted telephonically through Zoom and broadcast live on the city's website. Please be advised that pursuant to the executive order and to ensure the health and safety of the public by limiting human contact that could spread the COVID-19 virus, the council chamber will not be open to the public. Some members of council will be participating remotely and will not be physically present in the council chamber. If you would like to speak on an agenda item, you can access the meeting by dialing *671669-900-9128. Enter meeting ID number 82314748848895. The city wants you to know that you can also submit your comments by email to ccpubliccomment@grandterres-ca.gov. The City of Grand Terrace thanks you in advance for taking all precautions to prevent spreading the COVID-19 virus.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. If you would, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Hussey.
Present.
Councilmember Robles.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
I am here.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I've had a request to reorder a removal of item from the agenda, and that would be our closed session. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I do not believe the closed session will be needed tonight, so I will be pulling that item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, we will move on. Tonight, we have a special presentation from the U.S. Census Bureau. Presenting tonight will be, is it Idell or Edell?
Idell.
Idell Stokes, who is a partnership specialist.
Yes.
Please present to us.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. I am stopping by to give you an update and praise Grand Terrace because I represent a few other cities that are not doing as well in the self-response for the 2020 census. But as of today, Grand Terrace is at 66.2% self-response.
Wow.
And we are proud of you guys. Only other people that's probably kind of beaten Grand Terrace is the City of Chino. They're probably at 70%.
Oh.
So, we are thankful for Deborah, who's been helping us out, getting the word out. I just wanted to update you guys on the timeline. Things have been changing a lot with COVID-19, and we wanted to update you guys as far as the self-response is going to be extended until October 31st. So far, everything else is kind of like on hold. We don't know when we're going to actually have people going out to homes to put, they've actually started to put some things on the door, but to actually self-respond, go to those people who are the non-response follower. So, we still, they don't know if they're going to still do that because of COVID-19, but we are hoping that we can get the city involved more so by, you know, putting it on your social media, anywhere that we can put this information where they can actually access it themselves. And they can self-respond online by telephone. They don't have to, you know, if they uncomfortable with going online, they can call the 1-800 number. We have all of that information that we have put in an email. I sent a link out as well that they can just click that link in order to self-respond because we do need this money going back into our community. And we are hosting webinars every Wednesday at 3:00 PM if anyone is interested in order to try to show the residents how to fill out this census questionnaire if they need any assistance. So, we are doing those webinars every Wednesday. There is a link that I can send out to the city each Wednesday that they can actually put out to help those residents that might have, because I think the biggest issue I've had, and I've seen people call and ask me, is the actual ethnicity question. They're kind of confused as to, you can check more boxes now. So, it used to be you were black, white, but there is, you can go more extensive as to who you are. So, we are training, and we are doing whatever we can to make sure that people understand that we do not share any of this information with any other government entity, and that more now so than ever do we need to respond to the census questionnaire. So, that's pretty much what I stopped by to say today. And if you guys have any questions or you need any assistance more from me, please feel free. My information, Deborah has all the information because I try to update her either daily, I'm always bugging her, or weekly with these self-response update. So, if you guys have any questions for me, please feel free to.
Thank you, Ms. Stokes. Are there any questions at this time? You did a very nice job. I look forward to seeing the link that I can share for people to self-respond, and it sounds like we have some work to catch up to Chino. So, thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Yes, we've hit, everything is in blue, and we love that because when we look at the self-response map, you can see that as well. I've sent that out. The self-response map shows you those areas that are usually in brown, that means that we're not getting a response. But pretty much, everything is over 50% in Grand Terrace. We have some light blue, and then that's dark blue. And it'll explain that to you on that self-response one. So, I do appreciate you guys' time. I know you've got other things to do, but I do appreciate that. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for taking the time to be here with us this evening.
All right. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. All right. So, I did have a removal of one item. Is there, are there any other items for removal or reordering on our agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
So, we'll move into the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the City Council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to remove items from the consent calendar? Councilmember Allen.
Item 2, please.
Any others? Right. I will entertain a motion for the balance.
I move the approval of the balance from the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen for all items except for number 2 on the consent. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. Item 2, approval of minutes from regular meeting, May 26, 2020. Councilmember Allen.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. There's two errors in these notes for minutes that I need to have corrected, please. First of all, I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem for bringing this to our attention. So, I'll read the error, and then I'll read the correction. Councilman, here's the error. "Councilmember Jeff Allen attended the meeting of the Planning Commission, Design and Architecture Review Board on May 21, 2020 via Zoom to observe. He encouraged City Council to also occasionally observe the city's boards and commissions to make sure the performance meets the council's expectations." And then, the follow-on, "Mayor Pro Tem Wilson takes umbrage with fellow council members' comments and asks the city attorney to weigh in. His idea was also to monitor different committees. He doesn't think the city committees are as bleak as everybody..." So, here's the errors. First of all, "According to the minutes, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson says he takes umbrage with my comments regarding the attending of a meeting, a commission meeting digitally. He also asked the city attorney to render legal opinion on this. Mayor Pro Tem's response to my report has indicated to me, one, that it must be serious if he asks the attorney to weigh in, and, two, because it's that important, that it must warrant and deserve a proper response and correction. I don't want anyone to think that I violated any protocols, policies, or laws or ordinances based on erroneous information. So, let me be 100% clear. I did not attend any meeting via Zoom platform, as is stated incorrectly in the minutes, and I did not say that I did so. I did not know how, I don't know how or why this idea came up in anyone's head that I did unless they were just assuming that I used the Zoom platform. There is a platform on the city's website that has been there for years that all residents around this city use to watch the meetings live, and that is the meeting, the link that I've used. It's the same one that's been there for years. So, that's why I have, we learned this years ago, first thing we learn as a council member, don't influence other meetings. And that's why I've not physically, nor have I used Zoom to attend any commission meetings. But I do watch them either on TV or on the Internet using the city's live link so that I am not uninformed." Now, the second error is the last sentence, which states, "In the minutes, he received a letter from a resident in the community who mentioned the integrity of the city's boards and commissions and stated that it was the worst the resident had witnessed in 30 years." Here's the correction. The sentence states that I received a letter from a resident. The correction is that I received multiple letters and messages from multiple residents, one of them being the same one all of you received, which questioned the integrity of our commissions. The second is a mail I received from another prominent resident who stated this commission is the worst they've seen in 30 years. And so, that's the corrections I would like to have made. I did not use Zoom. I used the digital platform, which is anonymous. And I'd also like to have the correction made that there was more than one mail received from more than one resident. That is all. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, will you bring those minutes back to us at our next meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. We'll move forward with public comment, and this is an opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Restrictions contained in California law prevent the City Council from discussing or acting on any item not on the agenda, but may ask a question for clarification or request a brief response from staff to questions raised during public comment. Do we have any requests to speak at this time?
Yes, Madam Mayor. There's Antonio Gutierrez on the line. I'm admitting him right now. However, it is video only, so between him and this Jaden Wilson, oh, wait, wait, wait. No, wait.
Mr. Gutierrez? Oh, he's muted.
Yes.
We have you here for public comment for items not on the agenda. Would you like to address us at this time?
At this time, I'm just here to listen. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here tonight.
No problem.
All right. Was that it?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Well, we'll close public comment and come back to council members for their communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. Since the last meeting I attended and participated in, the Black Lives Matter rally at the corner of Mount Vernon and Barton Road. That's the sign I carried for over two hours with that group. I just want to start by saying that I'm very proud of the approximately 80 or so folks who showed up and exercised their First Amendment right to peacefully protest against systemic racial injustice that continues to plague every area of our society and to publicly acknowledge and thank all the participants for maintaining a peaceful protest here in Grand Terrace. I believe I was the oldest person there, but that's okay, actually. That's a good thing because it was all those younger women and men and little kids hoisted up on their mom and dad's shoulders, holding their own signs against injustice, that spoke the loudest and made the biggest impact. I promised them there, and I will say it again here, and now, I will stand with you here because Black Lives Matter. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
Oh, it was Bill Hussey next.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Councilmember, Bill Hussey.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank the sheriffs and first responders and city staff for, you know, everything you guys did during their curfew and made sure our city was safe and stuff. And so, you know, guys, you know, my prayers are with you every day on that, and so, thank you for maintaining law and order, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
Yes, Mayor. I attended via Zoom the League of Cities Revenue and Taxation Committee meeting last Wednesday, and the key items on there was, and the city manager also has reported to all of us that the cities are going to receive funding from the state share of the CARES Act. We had a vote on whether the League of Cities should support the split role measure on the November ballot, and the, it was a no vote. We had a vote on the transfer of the base tax rate for over 55 and disabled to be uniformed throughout all counties, and that did receive endorsement from the League of Cities Revenue and Taxation to the board. And I just want to also express my sympathies to the tragic circumstances facing our country and thank everyone who has participated in having their voices heard, and also those that have to keep the peace. This is a watershed moment and a difficult time for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Pro Tem Doug Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few minutes. We've been talking about, leading up to July 4th, and there's been a lot of concern by the fire department about fireworks in our high-fire hazard area. And last Sunday, had a person or located a person that was firing off illegal fireworks, contacted the Sheriff's Department. I want to thank them for their quick response and their complete response. They, I was, I gave them direction where the fireworks came from, and as we talked about in the last meeting, I said I would, I would follow up and that I would back up any claim that was made. They did approach the door of the person, and everybody went, everybody hid. So, today, I was contacted, actually, I was contacted yesterday by our main contact for the Sheriff's Department. He followed up with me, and this morning, the, another one of the officers, one of the deputies, came to my door, and he followed up and looked, looked the situation over, gave me information, and then visited the party and came back with some photos, and they are still in the process of investigating. Lot of hard work on something that would seem fairly simple, but we are in a high-fire hazard area, at least where I live, and it's right in the limit, and somebody firing illegal Roman candles in the direction of large trees that are very flammable is no, is no kidding matter. So, I really appreciate the way the fire, the Sheriff's Department reacted, and I appreciate our ordinance that's in place to address these issues. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Wilson. I'll make my comments brief. I will start with a congratulations to our neighboring Colton Mayor Frank Navarro. He was elected the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority and Council of Government's President for the next term that will begin on July 1st. And congratulations to Julie McIntyre, the mayor of Barstow, on being elected Vice President. We had an update at OmniTrans, heard about the cuts that will be made and the way that they're adjusting to their budgetary issues based on the plummeting ridership in the face of our pandemic, and hopefully, that starts to come back. They were looking at the summer being a little bit light in ridership because of schools being out, but maybe with some of the adjustments of the school year, maybe that'll change. And then, lastly, I will congratulate those who came out to protest and doing so peacefully. They exercised their right to free speech. They did it without breaking laws. I noticed when they were crossing the streets at Barton and Mount Vernon, they did so with the lights, and that was good because that kept everybody safe. And I will thank our law enforcement and the show of all those that came to make sure that not only our city was safe, but those that were protesting were safe and were not in fear for their lives while exercising their right of free speech. I thought we, we had a really good showing with respect to commentary and doing so in a respectful way. And so, I'll end there and move on to our new business. Item number nine on our agenda is consideration of a third amendment to the City Manager Employment Agreement extending the term to June 30th, 2025, and making certain clarifications to the agreement with no increases to salary or benefits. Mr. City Attorney?
Excuse me, Mayor. Before you start, I'm going to leave the room, and Miss Fortune Assistant City Manager will be available.
Okay. Mr. Duffy will be leaving the room at this time.
And we will let the record reflect that the city manager has left the room, and he was requested to leave the room because he does have a financial interest in this contract, and under the conflict of interest laws in California, we want to make sure he's observing them, observing them as we, as we are as well. So, this item is the consideration of a third amendment to the City Manager Employment Agreement. This item supports all adopted goals and adopted core values of the City Council and their 2030 vision. The city manager is the key point person appointed by the City Council to achieve and effectuate the City Council's goals. As quick background, G. Harold Duffy was hired as the city's city manager effective June 1, 2015. His original term of contract was for three years, lasting until May 31, 2018. His initial salary was $180,000. Two amendments to the agreement were effectuated after. In August of 2016, the council approved the First Amendment, adjusting his base salary to $206,400. And in June of 2017, the council approved the Second Amendment, making three revisions. One was to adjust his base salary to $215,000, commencing July 1, 2017, amending certain benefits provisions of the agreement, and extending the term of the agreement until June 30 of 2020. Recently, the city manager requested a five-year extension to his current agreement, which is currently set to expire at the end of the month. The city manager did not request any increase or change to his salary or benefits. And so, before the City Council this evening is a proposed third amendment to his agreement. The third agreement, third amendment would extend the term of the contract until June 30 of 2025. His salary and benefits would not be increased. They would remain status quo. In making this proposal and in reviewing the agreement, I looked to see where we could clarify some provisions of the agreement, and here are some that were added. So, in Section 2 of the amendment, and I say Section 2, Section 1 of the amendment is to adopt the recital, so that's why I'm skipping number 1. But Section 2 of the amendment provides a performance evaluation schedule. So, he will be evaluated, if the council approves the amendment, in August, January, and April of each year. The August and January evaluations will be for the purpose of evaluating his performance with respect to his meeting or advancing the City Council's goals and objectives. The April performance evaluation will be a comprehensive performance evaluation with a written summary, that is, the traditional evaluation. The city council, city manager is directed via the amendment to place the item on the agenda timely without further council direction. He's basically agreeing to it in the agreement. And, you know, notwithstanding the foregoing, the City Council can always place a performance evaluation on an agenda at a future meeting outside of these three regularly scheduled evaluations. In Section 3, we clarified the elimination of forfeiture of management leave under California law. He, you do not forfeit it. He is entitled to that as a deferred compensation. So, we just clarified some of that language to ensure consistency with state law. Section 4, there was some language in there regarding participation in PEPRA and also some FICA. It was a little more vague. We clarified that language as well as the employee contribution amount. Section 5, we corrected typographical errors that referred to her as a city manager. It should be he and him and his, so we corrected that. Section 6 was clarifying the language in the agreement as to what provisions controlled separation. Is it the agreement or is it the municipal code? We believe the intent of the agreement was that the agreement controls and not the provisions in the municipal code. So, we clarified that. In discussing with the city manager, there was one provision that he requested remain, and it was his understanding all along that that provision did apply, and my understanding as well that it did, based on, you know, from what I have heard. So, we did add that back in, so it's clear, and there's no doubt in the future. But the provision provides that the city manager cannot be removed from office 90 days after a municipal election or when a city council member is appointed to the city council. So, that provision is now clearly in the agreement. Section 7 is a common provision we see in all city manager contracts and many, many employment contracts for that matter, which is if the city is going to pay severance to the employee who's being separated, the city will get a release of claims, and the city manager agrees to execute that release and not challenge a termination. Otherwise, theoretically, the employee could take the severance and then come back into the city right after that and basically have double opportunity to collect from the city. So, we clarified that. Section 8, there are provisions in the agreement that clarify some sections survive the end of the agreement, indemnification provisions, provisions regarding reimbursement to the city. We clarified what those provisions are. Section 9, as I stated earlier, is to extend the term of the agreement to June 30, 2025. Section 10 clarifies provisions that survive the agreement. I think I already went through that. Section 11, another interesting one. Previously, the agreement stated that if there was some legal dispute, that the county of Los Angeles would be where the court would be held, and we clarified that to be San Bernardino County. And going back, because I think I skipped over Section 8 there. Section 8 basically says if the city manager were to leave on his own and go to another city, for example, or if the city were to terminate the agreement, that that would not be deemed a breach of the agreement. So, we just clarified that. Again, that's a standard provision. So, with that, those are the only revisions. Again, there is no change to salary. There are no change to any benefits. That remains status quo. And I'm happy to answer any questions. At this time, it is appropriate for the council to consider the agreement, and if acceptable, approve the third amendment to the City Manager Employment Agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra. Are there questions of city man, or city attorney at this time? Okay. Seeing none, are there any requests to speak from the public on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. So, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion. Councilmember Allen?
I'll make a motion to approve, Mayor.
Okay. I think I heard Doug say that he was motioning, so can I have a second from you?
You can.
Okay. So, motion by Mayor Pro Tem Wilson, second by Councilmember Allen. Please call the vote.
I want discussion, please?
Sure.
Just, I'll make it very, very brief. I agree with all of this except the term, and it's no reflection on Mr. Duffy. I'm very pleased with his performance. I want him to stay, and it just has to be with, we're always teetering on a financial disaster, and we have three council members up for reelection, and we would only, from November, to next year, would only have four years. He has five years. And I just think it'd be better just to, as a policy, to have a two-year contract, so as you have two-year elections, that allows some more flexibility. I know there's a discussion or about that we would save money, but even if we we appointed Assistant City Manager, we'd have to pay them more money, so that adds up to a considerable amount. Or we, and I'm sure my been here, we've had to hire a couple temporary people, so there's double costs that we should be concerned about. I'm just, you know, was looking for a graceful exit that, uh, we might have for the city financially. Um, but other than that, that's my only concern. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing those concerns. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
No.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay. Go get Mr. Duffy on your way out. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Guera. And so Councilmember Allen will be returning, but we will continue on as soon as City Manager Duffy returns. All right. Congratulations, Mr. Duffy. You will be with us for the next five years. We expect good things. We're moving to item 10, which is an update on COVID-19 and the implementation of curfew from 7:00 PM on June 2nd through 5:00 AM on June 4th, 2020. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, G. Harold Duffy, City Manager. Um, this is an update for today regarding our COVID-19, and also we'll talk about, uh, the recent curfew that was imposed and, and then rescinded. So at the end of this presentation, uh, we'd like the public and the Council to ask, to ask any questions, and I'm also have available our first responders in the room. We have Chief Mejia and Lieutenant Lane from the Sheriff's Department. So this is an update to COVID City Council, the COVID-19. And the process we've gone through over the last three months is we've worked with local experts, the County Public Health Officer, County Samaritanos, uh, California Office of Emergency Services. Uh, we have had daily contact with our first responders, uh, the County Samaritan Fire Department, County Samaritan Sheriff's Department, and the Operational Area Command Operations Center. So this has allowed city staff to post relevant information on social media to keep the Council and the public informed. Uh, these posts like this one has been very, um, instrumental in keeping the public informed and taking data from the County Public Health site and kind of condensing it down to more digestible read for our, our local residents. And then there's also it's a really good site. The County Public Health has lots more data than the general stuff that I provide, uh, but we, we always have that link available for the public to, to, uh, to, to access. So here's an example of, uh, the latest information as of this morning. Uh, as of this morning, we had 453 GT residents tested. As you can see, I've shortened this chart to get down to the City of Grand Terrace. We have a total of 28, uh, COVID-19 cases now, uh, and I think, I believe a total of about three deaths and, and all in City of Grand Terrace. Some of the other things that we've done to, uh, to ensure that the public has access to, uh, testing, we hosted a drive-up testing along with our partner, Azur Hills Church. And that was on, uh, Thursday, May 7th, uh, at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We had about 350 residents, uh, sign up for that. I'm actually, actually received the testing, uh, at that event. Our next, uh, action is we've, we've scheduled a walk-in testing clinic at the senior center. It'll occur sometime later this month. It's for, uh, for residents of 55 years or older. It's with or without symptoms, you can, you can walk in and get your, and get your test. Let's talk about city's operations. So City Hall reopened this week for business. Uh, we were always open. We, our lobby was closed. And so now the lobby is open. We're following social distance standards. We have protection for the employees. We have a notice for the, um, residents or business people that come to the, to the, uh, to this lobby. We provide them with masks if they don't have them. We have protective, uh, Plexiglas. So, and I think it's worked out pretty well this week so far. Our parks are open for passive use. Our county library is, is still closed, but we believe it's gonna open sometime, uh, in the near, next two weeks. Um, just to remind the Council too, that we also receive community development block grant funding called CBDCV, about a hundred and four thousand dollars for homeless outreach for our Hope Program and also for Food Bank. Now let's talk about a little bit about the community protest, um, that occurred over the last, uh, last week. So the county, uh, was sending out flash reports because, uh, the protests was pop, were popping up in various parts of the, of the county. Uh, and then one of the concerns that we had, working with sheriffs, is that we'd hear things that, uh, Grand Terrace is gonna be in line for a protest, and then we hear that it wasn't gonna be in line for a protest, and then we, you know, it would just go back and forth. But the sheriff continuously monitored. And here's one of the posts which the sheriff would be looking at. It says, "Meet here and walk toward where Chills used to be and stand in the area. It's a four-way stop, and we can spread our protesting all, on all corners." So this, this actually really played out, uh, in this particular case. We actually thought too that they were coming to City Hall, so we were prepared at City Hall. We blocked off certain sections of the parking to allow, uh, for the protesters to go in and park in certain areas and then meet up in the front of City Hall steps in front with the library, you'd access the library. But that, that didn't pan out. They actually all ended up, uh, at the four-way stop on the corner of Mount Vernon and Barton Road. And so these are some of the signs that they were holding, uh, as, as the mayor indicated along with, uh, actually the entire Council. It was a very peaceful protest, very well organized. Um, and we actually had, uh, about nine law enforcement people on site, sheriff deputies, and, um, they have, uh, a tactical team that, that roamed around from protest to protest. So while they were very nearby, uh, they were at a good distance to allow the protesters to protest without any, without any incidents at all. And so, uh, just to remind the Council that we also have our, uh, digital street cameras. And so this is, was an actual clear view, but I, I just pixelled this out so you couldn't see the, the individual faces, um, 'cause I think some of them might be kids and so on. I just pixelled it out. But we had a very clear view of, of our, our camera system of the protests, uh, and so our cameras are all over the city. Um, at one point in time though, we did decide to issue a curfew. Uh, we established that curfew on June 1st from 7:00 PM to 5:00 AM. We issued that through our social media, through a press release. Uh, and then, uh, one of the things we were able to do at the very end of removing the protests through, uh, consort with, uh, the Sheriff's Department, we were able to send out our first emergency alert that allowed us to hit, uh, cell phones. Uh, and, uh, I asked people on Facebook if they received it, uh, please let me know. We got probably about 300 or so people that responded, yes, that they had, had received the, had received the alert. And so, uh, we have Chief Mejia from the Fire Department here and Lieutenant Lane, if the Council has any questions about COVID-19 or, um, the, uh, recent protests.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Questions of staff at this time? All right. Are there any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Well, we'll close public comment and I'll entertain a motion to receive and file.
I'll make that motion to receive and file.
I second the receipt and file.
Okay. Motion to receive and file by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Robles. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yay.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Move on to item 11 with the, which is resolutions calling and giving notice of a general municipal election on November 3rd, 2020, and requesting consolidation of the municipal election with statewide general election on November 3rd, 2020, and establishing a candidate's state, statement, excuse me, establishing candidate's statement regulations. Madam City Clerk, Deborah Thomas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of Council.
Resolutions calling and giving notice of a general municipal election on November 3rd, 2020.
Wants to read it for you.
Okay. Before you, before you this evening, um, our resolutions calling and giving notice of a general municipal election, which is going to be held this year on November 3rd, 2020. The staff report supports our core values of open and inclusive government and goal number five, engage in proactive communication. In an effort to conduct municipal elections in an efficient and cost-effective manner, the San Bernardino County Register of Voters Office has conducted the city's general municipal elections since incorporation. In order to request these services for the upcoming general municipal election, the City Council must adopt resolutions calling and giving notice, requesting county service, and setting regulations for candidate's statements. On November 3rd, 2020, the city will hold its general municipal election to elect three council members for a full term of four years each. This nomination period begins on July 13th and will close on August 7th. Candidates who wish to pull papers to run for office will need to schedule an appointment with the City Clerk's Office during this timeframe, and those who wish to submit a candidate's statement will be required to pay a deposit of $250 to cover the cost of printing. As indicated earlier, the City Council is required to adopt a resolution requesting the services of the County Register of Voters for the November 3rd election and a resolution establishing candidate state, excuse me, regulations for candidates pertaining to candidate's statements submitted to the voters. The adopted resolutions need to be submitted to the county no later than August 7th, 2020. The Register of Voters Office has estimated the cost for services provided to the City of Grand Terrace for the November 3rd, 2020 general municipal election in the amount of approximately $10,000. Sufficient funds have been included in the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget. At this time, the recommendation of staff is to approve a resolution calling and giving notice of the holding of a general municipal election on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020, and requesting the Board of Supervisors of the County of San Bernardino to consolidate the general municipal election and the statewide general election, and approve a resolution establishes, establishing regulations for candidates for elective office pertaining to candidate's statements submitted to the voters. That's the end of my staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas. Are there questions of staff at this time? Any requests to speak that you know of? You'll check.
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. All right. We'll close public comment and bring it back to Council for consideration of a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'll, I'll recommend, uh, approval of both recommendations. To approve, do we need to read these?
Mr. City Attorney?
No, I think you need to state the, uh, adoption of the two resolutions stated in the staff report. That's fine.
I recommend adoption of the two resolutions as stated by the City Clerk.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Allen.
A second.
Councilmember Hesse seconds. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yay.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. We will move on to item 12. Resolution authorizing the City Manager to submit a local early action planning grant application in the amount of $65,000 and execute an agreement with the California Department of Housing and Community Development. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor. Steve Weiss, our Planning Development Director, will be presenting this grant.
All right. Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Magna Bo and Councilmembers. For the record, Steve Weiss, um, Planning Director and Development Services Director. Uh, the item before you is, uh, known as a local early action planning grant application. Um, and it, it supports our vision statement by, um, preparing a compliant housing element to promote economic development and, and, uh, keep our general plan internally consistent. Next slide, please. The funding, uh, opportunity, it's through the Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, it's authorized, authorized to issue what's called a NOFA or a Notice of Funding Availability as part of the Local Government Planning Support Grants Program. And actually, it's here under referred to by the department as the Local Early Action Grants Program or LEAP. The department has issued a NOFA, an application on January 27th of this year in the amount of $119,040,000 for assistance to all California jurisdictions. Next slide, please. And what is LEAP actually? The Local Early Action Planning, it's not, it's a non-competitive grant application providing you get it in early enough and do it correctly, that provides assistance to jurisdictions for the preparation and adoption of planning documents, process improvements that accelerate housing production and facilitate housing element compliance and certification by the California Department of Housing and, uh, Community Development, or HCD. Next slide, please. Eligible activities may include update to our next housing element, which would, will span from 2021 to 2029, accelerate housing production, uh, provide environmental analysis that may eliminate the need for project-specific review, and also, uh, local process improvements that improve and expedite local planning initiatives. Next slide, please. So the primary purpose of the, um, of this report and resolution is for the City Council to support the grant by approving the resolution, which allows the City Manager to submit the grant application for 2021 through 2029 for housing element preparation. And next slide. Staff recommends that the City Council approve the resolution authorizing the City Manager to submit a LEAP grant application in the amount of $65,000. Next slide, please. And here is the title, "A Resolution of the Council of the City of Grand Terrace Authorizing Application for and Receipt of Local Government Planning Support Grant Program Funds from the Department of Housing and Community Development." Next slide, please. And that does conclude my remarks, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Weiss. Are there questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Weiss. Say, I just wanted to ask you real quick, Mr. Weiss, what, can you tell me specifically what we will spend the $65,000 on?
It will be for, um, uh, yes, Councilmember Allen, it will be specifically for, uh, to hire a consultant, a very qualified consultant to help prepare the housing element and keep the process, um, moving and to meet the, um, the 2021 deadline for completing the housing element.
Okay. And this is not something that we can do in-house with, by, we couldn't use this money to bring back a laid-off employee and then let them perform this housing element, is, or is it too complicated for that? Is this something above our, our, our staffs?
It's, it's a very interesting idea. Um, I, I don't think that is possible. Normally, we don't, staff does not prepare housing elements. It's, it's more of a, um, a regional type of responsibility where they have to, uh, they work a lot with the SBCCTA, they work a lot with, um, with SCAG, different groups, and they really have to be on top of it. It's a, it's pretty much a full-time job. These people are truly our specialists.
Okay. Well, then that, I'm satisfied with that answer. Thank, I'm just trying to look for ways to get our employees back off. Thanks, though.
Director Weiss, on page 235, is that a summary that will be going in as part of the application?
Yes, Mayor, it is. That, that's the application, and by July 1st, we'll submit this to, um, to, uh, HCD and HUD, and, um, and then we'll wait until we get our next pass to move ahead.
All right. Thank you. Further questions?
Ma, Mayor, also, um...
I, I need to see if Mayor Protem had a question. I don't think he does. Okay. Mr. Duffy?
To your point on packet page 237, the scope, the same scope is there, but it gives you the assessment of what the cost is by, by task.
All right. Any further questions? All right. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Close public comment and bring it back to Council for consideration of a motion.
Motion for approval?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Mayor Protem Wilson, a second by Councilmember Allen. Do we need to read the title of the resolution?
We do not, Mayor.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hesse?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yay.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Move on to item 13, which is Project Delivery Agreement between the City of Grand Terrace and the State of California Department of Transportation, and that is our Department of Public Works, who will be giving us a presentation tonight.
Yes, Mayor. Alan French, Senior Civil Engineer, will be presenting information.
All right.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Mayor Protem, Councilmembers. This item before you is a project delivery agreement for the West Barton Bridge Replacement Project. project. This item supports the 2030 goal number two, to maintain public safety, and goal number four, to promote successful partnerships. Next slide, please. This project will remove the existing bridge over the abandoned railroad. Next slide, please. The project did qualify for a highway bridge program funding, which pays about 88% of the project, which is about $3.1 million. There are various agreements that have been executed over the years since 1999 to 19, I'm sorry, 2017. Next slide, please. The bridge is on the city limit with Colton. Next slide, please. And the remaining 12% of the cost for the ridge removal, about $408,000, will be split evenly between Colton and the City of Grand Terrace. The guidelines for the bridge highway program were revised last October, and it required the agencies, still in the design stage, to execute the delivery agreement, which is part of the attachment of the staff report. Staff recommends approving the agreement and authorizing the city manager to execute such agreement, and appropriate the funds for the project. Next slide, please. I am happy to answer questions council may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. French. Are there questions of staff at this time? Council, or Mayor Protem Wilson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one question for Public Works representative. The cost estimate for the revised roadway versus the original bridge replacement, has it been updated that you know of? Has it been, does it specifically address the two-to-one slopes on both sides, the ridge cut, and the road, and the subgrade underneath, and so on, utility placement? And I guess I am asking about utility placement. Is there, are there going to be utilities within that road?
Yes, Mayor Protem. So, to answer your question, the road profile will substantially be lower when the bridge is removed. So, that cost, of course, it is substantially less than replacing it with another bridge, and those costs are included in the latest estimate, which is the 3.1 million. And then, there are utilities that need to be relocated. They are on the bridge right now, and they will be relocated underground. There is some overhead lines that may need to be moved. They wouldn't be undergrounded, but they would just be relocated out of the way of the construction, and those costs were considered in the latest estimate.
Thank you.
Further questions? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. We'll close public comment and bring it back to council for consideration of a motion.
I'd like to move the resolution.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Mayor Protem Wilson, second by Councilmember Hussey. Are we reading the resolution by title? No. All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes, and thanks, Mr. French, for everything.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wilson?
Yay.
Mayor Mcnevo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We'll move on to item 14, which is to continue deliberations of the budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Cynthia Fortune, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, council. Mayor Protem, city council, Cynthia Fortune from the city manager's office. Before you is a staff report to continue our budget deliberations for the proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, 21. Next slide, please. Okay, our budget supports all of our visions and goals, which is ensuring our fiscal solvency, maintaining public safety, promoting economic development, develop and implement successful partnerships, and engage in proactive communication. Next slide, please. One more slide. Thank you. So, before city council are the citywide revenues, all funds combined, and what's highlighted is our proposed budget for 2021 with total revenues of 8.1 million. Next slide, please. And our citywide expense against those projected revenues, again, for 2021, is a total of a little over 8 million. Next slide, please. Once more. So, to continue, our general fund revenues are proposed at 5.8 million, as explained to city council at our last council meeting. Next slide, please. And as shown, the city's biggest revenue generator for the general fund is property taxes. Between property taxes and residual receipts received from the property tax trust fund, almost 63% of our general fund revenues are from property taxes. Next slide, please. So, our expenditures, again, our proposed expenditures is 5.9. So, our expenditures are a little over our revenues, as explained again to council prior. Next slide, please. As shown in this chart, of all the categories, our biggest accounts are for professional and contractual services. Next slide, please. So, to give city council an idea, we put the top 12 services that constitute almost 3 million of that. So, the other 350, we have another 40, 45 vendors whose costs are all under $20,000. Next slide, please. And one more slide. As I mentioned in the prior meeting and today, the only fund that is requesting to use a fund balance is the general fund. Again, we are requesting to use $90,000 and change, and this is as a result of COVID-19, which has reduced our revenues drastically. So, we are recommending the use of the fund balance. Next slide, please. So, as shown in this, with revenues of 5.8 and expenditures projected at 5.9, we are requesting to use $90,000. That is not to say that we may use it all or may not, depending on when the economy comes back, how much of our revenues, this is just our estimate at this time. Next slide, please. So, what we had added was a position summary. Next slide, please. So, we wanted to show city council how we had gone from 2014, 15, right around when Mr. Duffy was hired, at the end of 2014, 15, and where we are today. Next slide, please. So, if you see the bottom, those are just the total numbers of how many positions we had had, what we had gone through the last couple of years, and what we had had to do to mitigate any more use of general fund reserves. So, we went from, in this fiscal year, at the start, from 21.5 positions, now we are down to 14.5. Next slide, please. And that concludes my report. We are recommending that city council direct staff to prepare the fiscal year 2020, 21 budget in accordance with city council approval, and return to city council for adoption of the resolution on June 23rd, 2020. That concludes my report. I will be happy to answer any questions city council may have.
Thank you. Assistant City Manager Fortune, questions of staff? I have a question. When do we close the books on 2020, or 2019, 2020?
Standard auditing allows us to wait 60 days to make sure all the revenues come in. If there is a big revenue that hasn't come in, they normally allow us to extend that. However, that is what our goal is, to see if we can ensure to receive all revenues and all expenditures by August 30th. Once that is done, we can do a preliminary assessment, and hopefully by September or October, provide city council with a preliminary report on how we did in fiscal year 1920.
Okay. So, we won't have, we really won't have an idea until September?
That would probably be the majority of our revenues. We can still provide one in July, and we can, what I would have to say is, this is what we've received at this point. And even for our expenditures, some bill quite a month and a half after the month. So, many vendors provided services in June, we normally don't even get their invoices to pay by the end of July.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions? Councilmembers?
Yes.
I heard an echo or something. I just noticed on property tax, and I don't remember why, it might have been reported another time, but there was, I'm trying to find the page. Okay. I guess it's 272. Property tax, it says adjusted budget was $1,980,000, and the actuals were $1,881,364. So, I was just wondering why there was a, we didn't receive as much as we budgeted.
And Mayor Protem, that is fiscal year 1819. I can go back and see, either we had received taxes that were late. If we received any revenues after that 60-day cutoff, and what our auditors recommend is that we actually book that revenue in the following year.
Okay, so it might have just been an adjustment, then? Okay.
Yes, it could be a current year adjustment or not, but I can go back and check, and I can provide that information to city council.
All right, thank you. Further questions? Mayor Protem, you have questions? No? Okay. Any requests to speak on this item?
I believe Antonio Gutierrez would like to speak.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Yes, just considering the recent events we've been having, and frankly, ongoing regarding Black Lives Matter movement, thank you for your support earlier, thank you, by the way, and the motion by a lot of cities across the country that are lowering costs, or rather, lowering the cost for the law enforcement and police forces. In agreeance with the recent studies that have shown plenty of support that there are better ways to allocate funding in order to have better and safer communities, is there any effort or any discussion for that to be the case for here in our city in Grand Terrace? For instance, to support mental health and other health opportunities that are required in our community?
Thank you, Mr. Gutierrez. Any other requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Mr. City Manager, would you like to make some comments with respect to Mr. Gutierrez's concern about public safety and mental health services?
Sure, absolutely, Mayor. You know, one of the things that the council has done in the past in relation to mental health is that we have the HOPE program, where there's an opportunity for the sheriff's department, and their officers are actually trained on knowing the resources that are available, so when they make contact with the homeless or the mentally impaired, they are able to provide them with certain resources. And so, it's not just one contact, you know, past history tells us that when a HOPE officer initially meets a homeless person, they actually have to do three, four, five contacts before the person actually moves forward. One of the other things that's important to understand about what's happening in other cities. So, one of the first things that a city will do when they try to reduce the overall cost for law enforcement, they will defund vacant positions. And so, right away, you get a significant amount of there. We're not, we don't have that luxury, where we actually only pay for our, I think, nine officers combined, and we are guaranteed through our contract that they're always available. So, it's not, for example, when you're doing an operation in the city, if you're doing police, if you do police, if you have 100 police officers, and that's what you're trying to have on the street every day, you have more than 100 officers because of vacation and sick and so on and so on. So, you staff up for that. And so, what's happening is when they get ready to make these budget cuts, they're reducing all of those vacant positions, and so they're going to be operating much leaner. We don't have that particular luxury in terms of our budgeting, but there's always an opportunity for us to look at ways to increase our services. For example, this council implemented the ALPR camera system. That system is a county-wide link, and it reads all the license plates, and so if a stolen vehicle is coming through our town, usually what happens is if it's a stolen vehicle or a vehicle that has been involved in another city, say, Loma Linda. And so, we often find that when there's a crime spree in one city, if they're caught in our city or the other city, we see a reduction in those types of behaviors. So, the ALPR camera system was one thing the council did, and also, the stagnant cameras that we have placed throughout the entryways throughout the city. That allows our law enforcement to go back and look at information to help with the investigations. So, while our HOPE program is working, we are actually getting more money through the community development block grant program to implement that. We certainly partner with the sheriff's department as often as we can. We, through the course of COVID-19, we've actually developed stronger relationships with the county and the public health department. So, there are probably some opportunities there to strengthen that, to get some more assistance in those areas.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Duffy. I had not said the words, but I had asked if there were any further comments, and I had intended to close public comment before I had Mr. Duffy's speak. So, at this time, I will officially close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation and consideration of a motion at this time. Councilmember Hussey?
Are we open for comment, too?
Sure.
You know, as far as the defunding of the sheriff's, my son's Riverside PD, and he worked a lot of hours during this protest slash riots, and his main goal is to protect people and preserve life, and also come home to his family. Being 26 years of law enforcement myself on the federal side, I see what defunding has done, and it's taken away good programs that the sheriffs have. Like Mr. Duffy said, the HOPE program for the homeless, school resource officers, the school resource officers are a big plus. I knew Officer Smith at the city of Colton when my kid went to Colton High School, and he was a strong influence. A lot of these boys and girls didn't have a father figure, and he was there for them. And also, you know, there was somebody they could go to. So, there's different things that's going to be affected on that. So, we've got to really think about when we do a defunding, that's what I've seen in the experience. So, you know, just one other thing that law enforcement officers, my son also, when he was going through the sheriff academy, they had a program to help the kids for Christmas time, and they went to Walmart and stuff. And the sheriffs, they actually, the academy class actually got their money out to, you know, help their brothers and sisters and stuff. So, there's good in everybody, you know, and you just got to look for it. But the sheriffs and fire department, they do a lot more than what just their jobs. They're always a community resource, they're always out there, they're a friendly face, they're there to help everybody. Every time we have a city function, they're there. All the residents love them, you know, they look, all the kids look up to them, and they're a role model. And, you know, it's unfortunate, some bad apples spoil the bunch, and, you know, you're going to have that, and I had it where I worked at. And unfortunately, some of those guys are protected by different resources I won't go into, but it's unfortunate. But I think when you look at defunding, you really got to look what's going to happen, and, you know, like I said, the sheriffs, the police, agencies, fire department, they do a lot of good for, that a lot of people don't see, and they'll take advantage, and I have seen it firsthand, I've dealt with it firsthand, being a parent and dealing with them on the youth sports and the youth organizations, and with our church. You know, they're coming out there. We have chaplains that, you know, are out there for the kids and the school shootings and stuff, so I just want to thank you guys for everything else that you do. So I just want to thank you guys for everything else that you do besides the law enforcement. And I just want the community to move forward on this. So that was just my comment, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hesse. I will put out my call for all those residents in Grand Terrace that want to have Grand Terrace be as safe as it can be, to form their neighborhood watches, get to know their neighbors, get to know the sheriff deputies that patrol and work with them. And I will also put out my call to become citizens on patrol because that is the way that we as residents ensure a safe environment and ensure that the welfare of all of our residents is looked after and we can build a partnership with our sheriff department instead of having an adversarial relationship. Let's all get to know each other and work together. Councilmember Allen.
I'd like to ask Mr. Duffy, you were speaking about the HOPE program. Is that funded separately from, we pay our sheriff's department costs out of our general fund. Do we pay for HOPE deputies out of general fund?
You pay for additional HOPE officer support. So right now, the sheriff has, for the entire county, four officers that run the HOPE program. What we did was we used some resources to have one of our officers trained on the HOPE program to give us the additional resource locally. But really, the sheriff's HOPE program could be expanded if that was something that the sheriff wanted to do, but that's a, that is a separate cost. Well, you have that shared cost for those four officers in your overall contract, but you've gone above and beyond that by having some additional resources.
So how many homeless people have they contacted and reached out? I mean, what's the, I've read the report. How many homeless people have they made contact with?
I can, I don't have that information on him. I can get that information for you, sir.
Last time I read the report, I think that it was four or perhaps Lieutenant Lane might know.
Lieutenant Lane?
Yeah, thanks. I was waiting for the chance to come up and speak on this. So to answer your question, Councilman, the last time that I talked with the HOPE team about homeless people that they've counted in this city, the number is four.
Okay, thanks.
And that's not to say that that's a total number, they contact many people throughout the city. And as the city manager described earlier, it's a number of contacts that they have to deal with these people to establish their need for services and their willingness and ability to accept those services. So that number has stayed relatively stable. However, they do contact many more people through their, through their daily duties that they're able to start working on getting those services for. So they remain quite busy.
Okay, great, thanks. Hey, I want to ask you this. How many hours a week do we have a HOPE deputy in our town?
So the city pays an additional 10 hours per week. So one day every week, we have an officer that comes and focuses on those quality of life issues such as homeless or transient calls for service. So you get, you get that person an extra 40 hours per month.
Do they spend all 40 hours on homeless issues?
Well, that is their primary goal and their objective during those times. They would also be subject to emergency calls for service as their time and their calls, their other activity allows. That would be an expectation. So aside from any emergency calls for service, the homeless issues would take precedent over any other proactive activity that they might engage in.
Okay. Is there a particular reason why we're using law enforcement to reach out to the homeless as opposed to the Department of Behavioral Health, DBH?
Well, it's actually a very fine partnership between the two. Central Station has a Department of Behavioral Health caseworker assigned to our station whose job it is, is to assist our deputies in the field with those people that they come across that need services. And that person is in our office, you know, five days a week, working constantly with our officer that does those shifts here. And it's primarily the same officer every week, so he's very familiar with the issues and the subjects that are in this community. And he works closely with that person in behavioral health. It does take a partnership because there is many, many times a law enforcement aspect to behavioral health issues. And it's certainly not our primary objective to put those people into, you know, a jail facility. Sometimes we have to do that based on their behaviors. But our objective is to use our partnerships with behavioral health to get them the services to avoid having to go to jail and receive whatever help they may need. And additionally, the courts also have a homeless court program that reaches out into the communities where homeless live who may have pending legal issues that need to be taken care of. And the court will reach out to those folks and establish a day of court for them and help them clear those issues so that they can now be eligible to receive certain services that they wouldn't have been able to otherwise.
Councilmember Allen, also, there's nothing to prohibit us from reaching out to public health directly and asking them for additional support. We can certainly find out what kind of programs they have, we can invite them to come to a council meeting and share that information. We use the HOPE program as a way to assist us in that areas for multiple purposes, but certainly the primary mission of some of the county programs are public, our public health, mental health and senior care. And so we can reach out to behavioral health and ask them for any sort of programs they have that they can work with us on. We can certainly do that.
So how much do we pay for the HOPE, extra for the HOPE deputy?
We pay approximately $26,000 a year for that.
Per year?
Yes.
On packet page 139 is the check register and it shows the amount of money we paid to the San Bernardino County Sheriff's Department in the month of February. And in the month of February, we paid $165,000 for their services and then we paid $31,000 for overtime charges. And then we paid another $22,000 for increased services. We paid $14,000 again for overtime. We paid $1,200 again for overtime. There's another charge for overtime. There's actually two more charges for overtime just for the month of February. And then on packet page 155, this is the next month, there's a check to the sheriff's department for $165,000 for monthly services. And then there's a check for $22,000 almost for law enforcement increased cost, the same thing as the previous month. There was a check for $22,000 for increased cost. And then we can go on over to packet page 163 and you'll see this played out again the following month of April where there's a series of checks written to the sheriff's department for overtime charges, three of them for a month. Now, I'm just trying to find out if we have, if we have an amount of money set aside which is 2.2 or 2.6 million to pay the sheriff and then we, how is, where does the overtime get paid out of?
Sure.
All this, these hundreds, these tens of thousands of dollars of overtime? And by the way, what is the increased cost that we're paying each month in the tune of about $22,000?
Okay. So initially, we have the standard budget that we have, and Ms. Fortune can help me out here. So we have the standard budget and that's that 165 number. Then, when the council approved the budget this year, you allocated another $90,000 for extra patrol, okay? And then when we approved the sheriff's contract, they had a footnote in the contract and it said, if labor negotiations, if there are increases in labor negotiations, you'll have to pay extra amount. So in, there is, the $21,000 is that increased cost from the labor, from the labor agreement. So when they gave us the original agreement, they said, here's what our cost is, but we're in the midst of labor negotiations. If you, if these, if the labor negotiations are, if the contract is, has an increase, you're responsible for paying that. So I-
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Clarification, the $90,000 additional, that was-
From the general?
-stated for overtime.
Yes, stated for overtime.
Which, which might go to the answer to why we're writing checks that are considered overtime.
Right.
Correct?
And so what you'll see is a first quarter, second quarter and third quarter cost associated with that overtime. And it was, and it was one of the decisions the council made during budget deliberations, is trying to find a way to get additional resources to increase patrol services. So Ms. Fortune, did I miss anything in that representation?
No, sir, you are correct, except the overtime budget was actually 115, 117, more than just 90,000.
Okay.
And so I wanted to just let Councilmember Allen know, the charge that you see for overtime, the big amounts, the $30,000, that's for a quarter. So that's a three-month, a three-month portion. What we can do if council should so want, we can give them a breakdown of all the costs and how they are gathered. Unfortunately, with our financial system, what we list is limited, there are only a number of characters. When they submit their quarterly report, that includes overtime, fuel and vehicle maintenance. And as you can see, a lot of them say overtime, but that's because the characters are getting broken off. Again, like what we can do is submit a more detailed report if council so desires.
So Ms. Fortune, on packet page 139, you have check invoice number 18975, first quarter, overtime and general services. So that would be, that was, is that what you were saying, is it includes that additional cost for fuel?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a request to speak from Councilmember Robles and then Mayor Protem Wilson?
But I'm not done.
Okay. We're going to come back because you've been pretty much taking all the time here.
Okay.
Thank you.
But I'm not finished, okay.
We'll come back to you. I promise you'll have a chance. Councilmember Robles?
I want to remind some members of the council that if you would look at the charts of the health, the fiscal health of the city, we had a few years where we were slightly meeting, you know, the difference between our revenues and our expenditures are. The history of the city is that we're spending a lot of money from the former redevelopment agency to keep afloat. So we no longer have that. Also, we have a debt that we've been paying back that we, when the city was borrowing from RDA money, that money that we weren't eligible to have. So, and this discussion, I've been following this very closely on Twitter and looking at the city of Chicago's budget for one thing. This is not, the discussion is for larger cities because larger cities have a different role. The way the state government works and we're a general law city, we're delegated certain functions when we became a city. The county has said that they're going to look at this issue of race as part of a public health discussion. The Black Lives Matter folks have been reforming their discussion about defunding police to restructuring police and how police operate. This is a very new topic that has not really crystallized yet and we're not, the state has delegated to county mental health services. What we have done is we had a settlement agreement with the city of Colton over wastewater and there was a one-time money of over about $450,000. And that is the money that we use for one time to augment sheriff services, to have community-based funding. Then we were looking at, was there a desire of this council to look at selling our underground utility Rule 20 money to fund services? We have been doing an excellent job here, an absolutely excellent job here. And I'm finding it very difficult to tolerate your grandstanding on this issue. You know, I think we really need to be level-headed, I think we need to have a discussion on this. We can possibly meet again and write a letter from all of us to the board of supervisors that as they pursue, you know, this discussion, can cities be part of it? Maybe this is something that is brought up at the San Bernardino SBCTA, you know, on some kind of local agency issue. But there is no money to just throw around or just say that we're going to become a mental health agency. It's just not that issue.
All right, so I have Mayor Protem next and then I'll come back to you, Councilmember Allen. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't, I don't think it's any secret that I have hammered the heck out of the sheriff's department recently. But that doesn't mean that I don't have a great deal of respect of what they've accomplished. They've been in existence for a long time. I'm also one of those kind of people that decides that rather than dismantle something before you know what you're going to do, that you probably better know what you're going to do first and then maybe do some adjustments. I will say that the couple of times that we've had actual day break-ins at our, in our house, we've been here for 40 years, and in those couple of times, one time was when I was on a planning commission, the other time was also when I was on a city council. And I was off, I was remote, so I had to depend on the service of the sheriff's department. No less than 10 officers showed up at my house on a moment's notice and protected the life of my wife and took information and pursued the circumstance like the experts they are. So before we start to bend in a direction that may cause us harm eventually, I think we should keep a clear head and maintain the status quo and then, you know, plan for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Allen, thank you for waiting.
You're welcome. First of all, I'd just like to say, please, to my fellow council members, please do not try to read into my comments ahead of time. Please do not try to assume you know what my position is because when you assume you know what that means, you make an ass out of you and me. Now I'll continue. I do, I am not a fan of the term "defund the police." I am not going there, so you can rest easy, my fellow council members. But every budget negotiation, we sit around and we pick and we argue and we bicker over tiny little nickels and dimes that we can provide our community, maybe a service here or there, or we'll delay this pothole, or well, it'd be nice if we could have a swimming pool, it'd be nice if we could fix a road that's unsafe, it'd be nice if we could have more senior services and year-round youth services, it'd be nice if we could fix Mount Vernon Slope so it wouldn't slide away, it'd be nice if we could fix the infrastructure south of Michigan Avenue so folks who live along Van Buren and Pico don't get flooded out. But when 60% of our budget goes to law enforcement, how are we able to provide any kind of, you know, of the kind of services that the 14,000 people that live in this city expect from us? It's like we sit around and we try to scrape pennies from other people so that we can somehow get an extra few minutes of a cop here in town. And I have ultimate respect for law enforcement and I've used them also in this city in the 20-plus years I've lived here. So don't think that I'm opposed to them, I'm not. But we spend so much money on cops in this city and our community services are lacking and it shows. And, and all I'm saying is that- And, and all I'm saying is that we're spending $2.2 million, and it's going up 7% a year, that's twice the cost of living. I mean, we can't keep up with that, and we, I will agree with you, Councilmember Robles, our staff works miracles with our budget so that we can pay for law enforcement. Law enforcement is important, and the safety of our residents are important, but so are community and family services, so are good roads and quality schools, so are proper landscaping, and all the other, and, and senior services, and buses that run all the time, you know, for the seniors, and, and year-round sports activities for the kids. These are the kinds of things that I just cannot abide by, the continual domination of our budget by the Sheriff's Department. I understand the importance and what the responsibilities of a contract city are, but I also understand we have responsibilities to the rest of our residents. And that's what I'm getting at here. There's a lot more money being spent on law enforcement than what meets the eye in this city, and it's being spent in other ways. I mean, the, I would venture to say that if we wanted to reach out to the homeless population, the four homeless people in this city that keep getting reported on the police report, that perhaps we ought to send somebody from DBH to talk to them. Maybe there's something not clicking between the ones who are going there now. Try something new, try something different. Like, for example, how about a lot more service specialists, unarmed service specialists? Do we really need to be paying for armed, you know, every deputy in here need to be armed? If you look at the services that are provided, the vast majority of those can be provided by a sheriff's service specialist. And this city used to have sheriff's service specialists in it that took care of those issues, and we need to have teams of those back here. That's what I believe. And another thing I want to ask, and maybe Lieutenant Lane might can address this. In those 5.76 street deputies that we're paying for, are we paying step A, B, C, D, or E rate?
So, my understanding of the way that the Schedule As are completed is those have to be factored in at the top step.
Even though we're getting a bottom step.
Well, you-
And that could be a 20% difference in salary rate.
You, you may be getting some, some lower step deputies at times, but for budgeting purposes, they use that higher number. There, there are a number of accounting policies that are well beyond my, my knowledge and skill. I did hand the, the city manager some examples of some quarterly billing statements which might answer some of the specific questions you had about the money and where it goes. And I believe the last page of that is a credit back to the city, which is the difference between Tier 1 and Tier 2 deputies. So, so for that difference, it's my understanding that those costs, the differences of that top step deputy who, who are under a retirement system at a certain level, and newer deputies that are under a separate retirement system at a lower step rate, I, I believe there's a, a credit that comes back to the city for that. So, so we do take into account that you're not always getting top step deputies here.
And we get a rebate back?
You do.
Or a credit back?
You get a rebate back on the, on the new retirement system. You don't get a rebate back on-
On the step.
On a step increase.
I see, okay.
And that was, and that was actually part of something that, I think that was negotiated long before I even received, got here, was in terms of, they moved to a new retirement system, and they were gonna factor that out as, as more people retired, they were bringing new deputies in, and they were gonna factor that cost out, so.
You know, we have to lay our employees and our staff off in this city, and we can't get, provide the services that our residents deserve from the taxes they pay as for our, for the services they get. We have to lay our employees off and, and increase the workload exponentially on the ones that we keep. And yet we're still taxed with this increase in the county, in the sheriff's budget. I contacted the Board of Supervisors, I sent a letter to my, to my supervisor, Supervisor Rao, Supervisor Ro, sent back a response that, you need to talk to the sheriff about that. Contacted the sheriff, sheriff said, well, you gotta talk to the Board of Supervisors about that. You know, what is this? These are like mom and dad saying, don't talk to me about that, go to your dad, go to your mom. Who is the one that we have to say enough is enough? We don't, we have to provide better services to our, our residents, our, our city, our staff, and you can't just keep bleeding us dry like this.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Allen, and Councilmember Hussey, and then Mayor Protem Wilson.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Allen, when you were talking, you act like we're not doing anything else in this city, that's what I'm getting. Let me just go, you know, the city here, Mr. Duffy, everybody, they found money for the bus drivers for seniors. We found, Councilmember Allen, when you were just a resident, you, you came up here with a request to have a $90,000 playground equipment installed, the, the thing, and we found money for that, Mr. Duffy did. We're finding money for the shelter for the fitness park, so, you know, our kids don't get hurt there. We have a community benefit fund that we established to help use in other programs. Numerous have come up here and used it. We had the DAT program come here that helps people off drugs. We had, you know, the, I could go on and on, I'm not, but, you know, we just had a lot of people that, that used that benefit, and it was really nice to have that benefit, and we're able to, to fund that completely. So, when we just think we spend about the sheriffs, yeah, I, I know that it's a cost increase, and, you know, I'm guilty, I, I tried to get a taxing to help cover that cost so we could maintain other things, but didn't go through, so that's, that's water, that's water under the bridge. So we still gotta go, and I know being a city, when we gotta incorporate, you gotta have so many certain service levels to maintain to be a city, and one's, you know, security, you know, public safety. And I know people use the sheriffs also when they call for, you know, people are dumping trash, illegal fireworks, we got a homeless guy doing this, we got somebody doing that, these kids are doing this, the sheriffs do more than just, you know, patrolling the thing. We got people running stop signs, we got a lot of break-ins, but they also there, you know, to help the kids at the school, help the kids cross the streets, a lot of things. And then, but you know, one thing about, I'm proud about Grand Terrace, very proud, and, you know, my wife grew up here, is the diversity we have in this city. I, I think we're the example of the IE as far as diversity. There's no neighborhoods with certain race or ethnic things, everybody's side by side, neighbor with neighbor, everybody gets along. If you look at the council pictures up there, we have wide diversity, you know, we had, Councilmember Allen, you had, you know, Ken Henderson sitting in that seat right there. So, you know, we had, we have a big diversity going here, and I, I think we're doing a lot of good for the residents. Yeah, I get upset too when we have to keep paying for the sheriffs, we could do, but, you know, I know that when you call 911, they're gonna be there. And the sheriffs, and I'm experienced, and I see it, they do more than just police. It'd be nice to have the sheriff's resource officer, we even tried to get that back with that taxing and have that big group, but we can't. And like Councilmember Robles said, you know, we did, we lived on RDA money. It was nice when we had all that stuff, but we couldn't keep paying on a credit card for all these services. But I still think Grand Terrace is the safest city, the council here listens to the residents, we try everything we can. I know when Mr. Duffy first came aboard, first thing we tasked him with is take care of the playgrounds, the, the county was gonna close our snack bars for those kids, and then how did they raise money? Mr. Duffy got the money, he found a fund, he brought it to the council, and was able to open snack bars, so the youth didn't have to worry about getting fundraisers to do that, because it was the city's responsibility, it was our responsibility for our community so our kids could go in the snack bar, and they learn how to, you know, talk, they learn how to, you know, communicate, they learn how to make change, they work there, they have a good time, they love working in a snack bar, because, you know, all these sports fields, they got numerous things besides just playing games, it's a family-oriented thing, you become family there, and it brings the community closer.
Yeah, Mayor Protem.
So that's, that's all I have on that. I mean, I, thank you, residents of Grand Terrace, and I didn't say, but thank you for your peaceful protest, you know, and I know a lot of the kids that were out there, and I know the parents that were out there with their kids, and, you know, thank you for the peaceful protest, because that's what me and Councilmember Allen, we served in the military for that purpose, or you have the right to peaceful protest. And like Martin Luther King always said, peaceful protests will get you everything right, won't get you any, nothing. So, that's all I have, Mayor, I just had to close on that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hussey. Mayor Protem Wilson, and then Councilmember Allen.
Mayor, point of order. I have a question. Did we appoint a subcommittee of some kind to go out and contact these various agencies on their own, or are we a five-member council that functions as one under the direction of the mayor and at the help of the, the city manager?
Mayor Protem, we did not appoint an ad hoc committee. It would be my hope that when Councilmember Allen went and spoke with the supervisor and the sheriff, that he did so on as an individual and not representing the council when he did it.
I, I definitely have a concern, and, and from that standpoint, I think it's worth putting in the record that when a council representative contacts someone in a government capacity, it gives the appearance that they are, whether they do a disclaimer or not, that they represent this entire body. I don't see that that is an appropriate use, and I think we have to be, all of us have to be careful when we do that. I think it's important for us to do our homework, and like I said before, I admit to the fact that I've been hammering the Sheriff's Department, but I'm a numbers guy, and that's what I do, and, but I also expect to get what we pay for, and rather than short the money, I'd rather make sure that we're getting the complete service that we look for, so. I just, I would caution any of us to step outside the authority of this body.
Point taken.
That's all I have.
Point taken, Mayor Protem. I, I will say that in absence of an individual stating clearly that they are speaking for themselves only, I will be reminded of council members from our neighboring city who have come during public comment and spoken, and it seems to me as though they are speaking on behalf of their entire city because they do not clearly say they are speaking for themselves. And so I, I, I understand the point you're making about the danger of, of doing that on our council. I appreciate the reminder, thank you very much. Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. Rest assured, fellow councilmembers, I would never, ever speak for you unless you asked me to when I contacted Supervisor Rao. I made sure that I noted that this was my personal thing, and I have, and I never contacted the sheriff, that's, that's the word he sent back to us, back to us, that if you want to deal with the budget, you gotta contact the Board of Supervisors, and that's the reason that I contacted the Board of Supervisors. I'm kinda surprised the rest of you didn't, but that's the way it is. I'm interested in saving, you know, some money in our city. I would like to draw your attention to packet page 52, Mr. Hussey. You know, you, I agree with everything you said about all those past events that this city has been, has been successful at. We, we have been, you, you went down a whole litany of events from our past, but I'd like to draw your attention on packet page 52 to our future, and those two red X's in the unsustainable insolvent mark for 1920, 2021, and the general fund's long-term financial performance. That's what I'm more interested in right now. I'm proud of our past history and performance, I want our future to also be something we're proud of, and, you know, so far, so good, but after what's going on, I mean, we, we should have a conversation, we really need to have a conversation, and I, every time I go to a California League of Cities meeting, and I go to every one of them, I listen to council members from all the contract cities say exactly the same thing I'm saying, that the Sheriff's Department, law enforcement, is killing them on their budgets. No one says anything different that I, that I know of, and so, that I've ever done. I've talked to many, many, many council members from contract cities who are saying the same thing. So, let's discuss our future, and something we can be proud of and see after our residents, and not just the past. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification, Councilmember Allen. All right, I'm going to, I'm gonna bring you back to the item that's before us.
What was that?
Yeah, what was that? You know, I, and we had good discussion, and I know we looked at a lot of the, the check register, and, and all of it is relevant because it's expenses and revenue, but, but what we're considering tonight is we're, continue our deliberations, and I think we had quite a bit of discussion. Is it at this time something that you would like to do to direct staff to prepare the FY 2020, 21 budget in accordance with the approved items above and return to city council for adoption on June 23, 2020, and find ways to move forward with discussions with the, the sheriff and the Board of Supervisors about what can be done with the sheriff contract in the future? Councilmember Robles?
Do you mind? Okay, okay. So when you assume, if you listen carefully, okay, I said "defund" means restructure. All right. So there's, I would like to see us adopt this budget because there's a lot of unknowns, and the city manager has assured us that he will come back when we have a reconciliation of the books, and we, we know more with this crisis, what's going on. In relations to the sheriff, there's, you know, I would say, you know, there's a misunderstanding about our budget. There, there's a lacking of historical knowledge about where, where we're at and how we got here. Also, when this pertaining to this issue is when the city was looking at all the issues about maybe even unincorporating. You, you have to have, if you're gonna become a city, you have to have a certain level of public services that's higher than if they were just in the county. We're very, very much on that thin line between having sheriff services that are more than what people would get if they were in the county. And, you know, the issue about affordability in the sheriff's contract has to do with public pensions and possibly employee negotiations that we don't do at this level. Okay, so we, we, I, I would like to have a letter talk about, you know, the plight, and we had that discussion, you know, and if I recall, you voted for the, for four people to get an additional sheriff's deputy for homeless things, and you voted on all these things. So, so if we have a letter to the sheriffs, it's gonna be on the, on the accelerated cost and our inability to, to meet that, or, or the difficulty about that. And the second point would be, as they move forward on discussions about the public health crisis, also with race and, and morbidity, with, with COVID and other issues, that we, you know, if they enter into discussions about how they restructure police services, that we'd like some way to be part of that discussion.
Okay, is that your motion?
Yes.
Okay. Mayor Protem has his hand raised, please.
Okay, I'm unclear, motion in there?
Yes, there's a motion to-
So are we seeing a motion?
There was a motion to bring back the budget, and I believe, can I, can I-
Go ahead.
-summarize. Councilmember Robles would like a letter that would speak to the, looking at the affordability of the sheriff, and being part of discussions if the sheriff is, or if the Board of Supervisors will look at a restructuring of the way law enforcement is within the sheriffs to include public, public health, mental health, and ways to focus on COVID-19-related issues. Does that summarize correctly? Close enough? Okay. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Mayor Protem, you're seconding it? Okay.
Yes.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Robles, and a second by Mayor Protem Wilson. Did you have comment, Councilmember Allen?
I just wanna make sure I'm real clear on, on, you, you want, on Councilmember Robles' motion. So the motion is to bring it back again for more deliberation with a letter, am I correct?
I think they're two separate things. One of them is the staff recommendation for the budget, which is directing the staff to prepare the FY 2021 budget in accordance with the approved items above and return to the city council for adoption on June 23, 2020, because we've already been told by staff that when- 23, 2020, because we've already been told by staff that once the books are closed for the end of the fiscal year, they're going to come back and we're going to see if we can make adjustments. But then I think secondarily was the, the discussion of the letter and wanting to, to approach the Board of Supervisors about being part of a discussion for the restructuring or refocusing of, of sheriff services.
And, and that would include also our shared responsibility, including the mayor, you know, we are ceding all of our authority to the Sheriff's Department for the execution of enforcement in our city. And that, you know, you, you have that power to limit what can be done in your city. Some mayors are taking that upon themselves to say, you know, no CS in my city, or you can't do this, no tear gas. If you, if you don't know what CS is, no tear gas in my city, or no Chocolates in my city are allowed, or this sort of thing. So these, these could also be part of that discussion that she's referring to as sheriff services.
Is that, is that part of the discussion you're referring to?
No, my, you know.
Go ahead, go ahead and clarify because I think my summary didn't quite meet what you were saying.
So, so the second part is two issues with, with the sheriff is, one is, you know, the burden of the sheriff contracts escalating costs. That's one issue. The second issue is, as this, as the county is, Riverside just went through this, and, and legal counsel told them, yes, the Board of Supervisors can look at the work plan for, of the sheriffs and how they, they do things, but there was no second. Okay, so it died. I don't know what this county's doing, but I know as far as on the mental health plan, they, they said that, you know, racism is a public health issue with, with COVID and all that. So my discussion was that as they move through their policy, because we're contractors, okay? We're contractors. They're set the policy as far as the sheriff, that, you know, we would like to be included in some kind of forum. Okay.
Okay. Does that, do you understand that, Mayor Protam? Are you still in a concurrence for a second?
Point of order, but I'd like the city attorney to weigh in on this. We're getting off, getting off topic. We've got an agenda, an agenda item that says we're going to approve or disapprove of the forwarding or finishing of the budget, of the budget for the year and close out. And then we're going off on a tangent. I think it's worthy to note, and it is in the record, that we are concerned about these situations that affect our budget drastically. There's no doubt about that. But I think it's the kind of direction that could be taken up on us on a, at a separate time on a, maybe a different agenda when we can make it a public item.
Okay. Well, I, I think that the idea is that it would come back to us to discuss, correct, Councilmember Robles?
Uh huh.
Yeah. So, so the, the first part is, is staff recommendation. The second part is that it comes back to us to give more direction to staff. Is that correct? That's how I understood it.
Yeah, because we'd have to compose the letter.
And so we'd have more discussions. Is that acceptable, Mayor Protam?
Yes, yes, or aye.
Okay. So you still concur with the second. So I have a motion and a second. Councilmember Allen.
And my last, this is not a budget approval vote, is it?
Well, it's having them come back with the final budget for approval. It's directing staff to prepare the FY 2021 budget in accordance with the approved items in the staff report and return to City Council for adoption on June 23, 2020. So no, we would be moving for adoption perhaps on the 23rd.
Because I still think it's, we need to have a discussion on our services and the cost. Okay.
Okay. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
No.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Wilson?
Yay.
Mayor Magna Bo.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. So we'll move on to requests for future agenda items by City Council. We have one item to consider to come back to us for discussion, which is a ballot measure for a transit occupancy tax. Councilmember Jeff Allen.
So I requested this, we've been, you know, talking about this off and on because of the Screens Group project and the, and the hotel that they're wanting to build. And I think that with the election coming up in November, that, and because this is an item that has to be voted on by the general public, you know, a transient occupancy tax is not, is not a tax that our residents will pay. This is a tax that travelers that use the hotel services will pay and that our city can benefit from. And so we have to have the item on our books, though, to be able to implement it. And I think we should have it there before the hotel is finished so that it's in place whenever the business opens, and that's why.
Okay. So your motion to bring it back, and I will second your motion to bring it back for discussion. Please call the vote.
Councilmember Allen?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussey?
Yes.
Councilmember Robles?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Wilson?
No.
Mayor Magna Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. City Manager Communications, Mr. Duffy.
Mayor, I do not have any for tonight.
You have no, you have no communications. I think you gave them to us before.
Other than to say thank you. I'd like to be around for the five-year term.
All right. Well, as I said, I'm glad that you're here, and we expect big things. Now, we just have a, a bigger hole that we got to dig out of, so. So lead the way on that one. And so at this time, we will adjourn to the next regular City Council meeting, which will be held Tuesday, June 23, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the City Clerk's Office, and the request will be processed in accordance with the City Council procedures. Thank you all for your discussion tonight. We are adjourned.